...year 2020 budget for Cable and Communications. My name is Eric Costello, I'm Chairman of the Committee from the 11th District. Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer from the 5th District, Member of the Committee. Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District. Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District, Member of the Committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. Jeff Amoros representing Mayor Jack Young. Rebecca Tab from the Office of Council President Brandon Scott. Please take it away. If you could keep your presentation to somewhere between five and 10 minutes. Thank you.
Hi, good morning Chair and Council Members. My name is Tanya Miller and I currently serve as the Senior Director of Public Affairs for the Mayor's Office. My portfolio includes CHARM TV, Live Events, Multimedia and Arts. Essentially, CHARM TV's mission is to serve as the voice in the heartbeat of the city. Our coverage is broken down into three parts: Government Transparency, Original Programming, and CHARM TV Digital. Under Government Transparency, we dedicate 6,500 hours to programming. We cover the Mayor, City Council, the BOE, the Liquor Board hearings and zoning meetings. Under Original Programming, we dedicate over 1,900 hours of programming. I am pleased to say that our new programming season is slated to begin on June 10th. Our new programming content will appear in 30-minute segments which will be featured on live TV along with short-form segments for digital and social engagement. Under our new show titles include Who We Are, which is focused on civic leaders and those who make the city work. That entails everyone from City Council members to the Mayor's Cabinet. Discover Baltimore is a new show that will focus on art, food, culture and the lifestyle of the city. Building Baltimore was developed to showcase neighborhood investment in Baltimore. We will spotlight those mid-range developers, community stakeholders and everyday Joes who are turning forgotten areas of blight into thriving communities. And finally, we also are developing a new show called Just Sports, a show dedicated, a docu-series dedicated to showcasing the best of high school and college student athletes. And finally, we also have a special presentation which includes short-form documentaries like the Mayor's Scholars Program. CHARM TV Digital, we are underway of redeveloping our website into a multi-channel multimedia platform. Our goal is to create shorter, quicker, digestible micro-content that showcases the best of Baltimore. Ideally, this new content will live outside of the perimeters of Baltimore City and spark national and international attention. It will also afford us the opportunity to monetize the platform through digital advertising and sponsorships. That's the end of my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. I want to thank you for everything CHARM TV is doing for us this week. I know it's a lot to film 50-plus hours of council hearings, just as it's a lot to sit through them. So, thank you to whoever's sitting in the back room there that's filming us this entire week. We really appreciate it. Councilwoman Snead?
How many people do you guys have on staff?
We have currently three full-time staff members.
And how many would you need to truly be up and running and to do everything that you...
Well, ideally, this past session, we asked for an additional three staff members.
What does that amount to? How much money does that amount to?
A rough estimate, maybe another 200K. I'm just sort of riffing, so don't quote me on that. But, you know, if you give them a mid-range salary, I feel like we could get that done.
Who's currently doing the social media over there?
So, under my tenure, I've sort of combined... So, CHARM TV is an extension of the communications team, so I've also been overseeing the communications team under the last administration. So, we have a social media expert on the com side that's in the Mayor's Office and her name is Jasmine Washington. So, between Jasmine and Joe, we sort of, we work together in concert and it's sort of an integrated team. So, for instance, as well as our graphic designer on the Mayor's side also helps to create graphics for CHARM TV.
We haven't received a tweet since February the 25th.
A tweet? I'm sorry?
A tweet since February the 25th.
From CHARM TV in terms of the council?
With anything?
No. I think that we sort of, I'll have to look at that. I don't have an answer for that.
If you have someone, that's what I'm wondering if...
Say again?
If those additional staff members will help with that. But if you already have someone designated, have them look at that because we haven't received anything from there. And my community loves Charm City Television. Like, my seniors watch it and so we refer to them.
I totally understand and we mostly share content from the Mayor's Office to CHARM TV, so some of the social engagement isn't targeted, so we should work on that.
Perfect. Thank you.
All my senior citizens in my district watch CHARM TV too. They love it, so saves them a trip down here. Councilman Schleifer?
Yes. So, first off, good morning. You guys do a great job, very professional stuff. A couple things. One, Councilwoman Snead actually took away part of what I was going to say, so I'll switch it up a drop, is that on Instagram, and I know because I was actually looking for something that, an event that you guys covered and I was trying to find like some pictures and stuff of it and to share, and I noticed that the last video you guys have on Instagram, which is pretty much where everybody is right now, is from September of 2018 and it's of Mayor Pugh. So, I'm sure the new mayor would probably like some of the recent videos to be of him and some of the work that he's doing. One other, one thing that I've requested in the past and there hasn't really been any follow-up, and I'm not putting this on you, this is, I guess, a mayoral decision, is that on the council, we all have different, well, not, we all have different things going on in our districts and it would be great to have some degree of an allocation, even if it's an unofficial allocation per district. So, if there's, if you guys are doing like a special or something that, a documentary and you're visiting different parts of town, that at least every council district gets some degree of time to cover or highlight certain businesses or organizations in their district that are doing unique things, things that really stand out. And I just haven't felt that there's really been any engagement like into the council. I feel like it's all been, all the extras, obviously besides, you know, covering the meetings and stuff, but all the extra stuff, the really cool stuff that you guys do, there hasn't really been any engagement to the council. And I was wondering what we can do, you know, to change that so that it's not just exclusively covering whoever the mayor is at the time, but also covering the great things that the council is doing and in their communities.
That makes total sense and we are in the process of expanding our website to make it more, as mentioned, a multi-channel platform. And so, one of the ideas that we actually just brainstormed about is to create, so that this neighborhood digital series where we're actually in various neighborhoods with City Council members, with community leaders, with small businesses, to really talk about that neighborhood, the plans for the future, how all of these people are integrated into the fiber of that neighborhood. And so, you're absolutely right. We will do a better job as we move forward.
Right, yeah. We definitely would welcome that and would appreciate those efforts. I know that when there's just coverage of different stuff and people are promoting Baltimore, where a community, where a city of neighborhoods, yet sometimes neighborhoods on the outskirts of towns like in my district and other districts don't really get coverage, but we have some pretty cool and unique things. And so, I just want to remind the city agencies that the city goes beyond like Hamden and stuff, so there's other neighborhoods that have things going up uptown that could certainly use being highlighted. The second question I have is about these three new positions. So, what specifically would those three people be doing?
So, to your point and to Councilman Snead, so we, currently we have two full-time shooters and editors. And so, for instance, one of our shooters have been here all week and so it's hard for them to edit content. So, for instance, if you were doing an event tonight, we wouldn't have the manpower and so we rely solely on freelancers to help with that. So, the goal is to, one, create, to have more producers and editors to do some of the more creative things that I've mentioned in this presentation as well as some of the things that you guys have mentioned. And we also, obviously, there's a gap in social media engagement and so as we develop this new digital platform, we will need someone to actually manage that, the digital platform.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The budget book refers to an item where it says the recommended budget includes $138,000 increase in the special fund account for public educational or government capital expenditures. Can you, can you tell me, tell us, you know, what is that and what are those capital expenditures that it'll be going towards?
So, I know that that is a much-talked-about subject and so our capital fund is definitely robust. And so, right now, we are in, we're at the end of our lease. We have two more years at our current lease and so we're in the process of looking for new real estate to move CHARM TV into. So, it may be a building that the city already owns or we may have to purchase a building. And so, we're, one, looking at some of those capital funds to outfit a new building for us. We also have been talking about creating a, sort of an incubator shop within the shop so that we can bring in younger content developers to use our equipment, to go out into the communities, to shoot stories, to do better storytelling for CHARM TV. And so, those are two of the things that we've been thinking about in terms of using some of the capital money. But as you know, the capital money cannot be used towards personnel. It only can be used towards capital expenses.
So, you said, I didn't know all of that, so thank you. So, you used the word robust. What does that mean? And you used it, I think, in reference to expenditures or capital funds. So, can you give me specific, what is robust?
I think that we have around an $8 million budget in our capital fund.
You have $8 million in the capital fund and you said that you intend on using that $8 million potentially to purchase a new building?
Not the entire $8 million. We're not buying an $8 million building, but I think that that's how we could use some of that money to perhaps purchase a new building considering that we're at the end of our two-year lease. Well, we have two additional years. And so, some of the issues that we have with the, where we currently are, air conditioning issues and certain things have come up and so we're in the process of looking at options before we run out the clock.
I'm sorry, again, and when does the clock run out?
In two years.
In two years? And so, you've already begun the process of looking at buildings? And I guess, did you start with city-owned buildings?
Yes, so we're working with our city real estate person to help us identify what inventory we already have and stock that may be, and we've already sort of worked with DGS to evaluate what kind of space we need in the future. And so, we're just in the infancy stage on that, but we are starting the process. I think we would be remiss if we waited for two years to come up with a Plan B.
And so, okay. I just want to make a recommendation if you, and I don't know if this building fits your needs. I know that Morgan has, I think, film space off of Cold Spring that is being woefully underused. And I don't know if that fits with what you all are looking for, but it would seem like that if, if your goal is to, you know, create incubator space and try to develop, you know, producers, whatever, for content, that might be, that might be an opportunity.
Yes. So, I mean, that's obviously a great suggestion. One of the things that we like, I mean, one of the things that gives us a bit of flexibility being downtown is if something is happening in City Hall and we have to respond to immediately. So, proximity is also key for us, but it doesn't rule out that we could not have a satellite office on the Morgan campus at all.
And I guess the last question related to this is, can you give me a little bit, and I'm sorry for not knowing, but can you give me a little bit more detail related to what can be, what expenditures could be covered by this $8 million capital fund?
So, just capital, so equipment, new equipment, you know, we've talked about creating a remote, like satellite van so that we could do our own reporting, those kind of things, we can buy util, I mean, those kind of hard capital products, but we cannot spend the money on operation or personnel.
Right.
So, to create new content, we cannot spend the money on that. So, to do new shows or anything like that, but we can buy new computers, new cameras, new software, new building, chairs.
And that would be new equipment specifically, specifically to be used by CHARM TV?
Yes.
And could it be new equipment to be used by partners of CHARM TV or is it?
So...
I mean, and I don't know if, this might be crazy, but say you had a, say you had an apprenticeship partnership with a high school or something and you created a training environment at a high school where young people were being trained in film, would that be a allowable expense?
As long as the content we can show on our platform.
Exactly, exactly. For example, Douglas has this tremendous, like, if there was a partnership between that program and CHARM TV, could these resources be used to augment what, you know, what Douglas is able to do with students?
Absolutely. I mean, we've also contacted Wide Angle and we've started conversations with Bear, I think that's what Morgan's television station is. And so, for us, because we're sorely understaffed, that also takes a person to sort of manage students grabbing content, uploading it, and so it does require a little bit more than just creating the infrastructure. So, it also requires a bit of management operation on that. But none of those things are off the table. I've talked to Wide Angle about some of their content and sharing their content on our platforms because we cannot produce the amount of content that we should and so we should rely on other partners to help build out and help to do better storytelling for Baltimore City. And again, as I mentioned, I really am dedicated to creating content that can live outside of Baltimore so that it goes national and international, so that we control the narrative outside of our walls.
So, what would I need to do to advance that discussion or conversation related to having a partnership or identifying the funds to have a partnership with a high school like Douglas that already has what I would call a robust, you know, program for youth? I mean, they are extremely talented, very skilled, and I'm not saying, you know, to the professional level, but if given opportunity, I think that their program like that, it's limitless how far it could go.
No, absolutely. I, you know, this season, this season, this year, this summer, we have a few fellows and we will have youth worker interns. And so, that will give us a little bit more bandwidth to help with management. And so, I welcome to have a follow-up conversation with you and your contacts at Douglas to sort of move the conversation forward. I'm not opposed to that at all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can I?
Is it a quick follow-up?
Yeah, it's just a follow-up.
Is it a quick follow-up?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
It is a quick follow-up. Some of the, as a communications major, we did it in college and so I just, Morgan would be a great place to start where they can supervise the younger folks at the high school level because I think you have a certain amount of credits and maturity to do that.
Absolutely.
FYI, so don't leave out our college people who are already taking those classes and being graded on that type of thing.
Absolutely.
That's it. Thank you. See, very quick, Chairman.
That qualifies as quick, Councilman. Thank you. We've been joined by Council President Brandon Scott and Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton and the 6th District, Member of the Committee. Mr. President?
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Director. How are you?
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning. Thank you for being here and thank you guys for all your hard work, especially during this week when your folks are here from the top to the bottom of the day. You know, we are in our first year of the implementation of my Equity Assistance Program. Can you tell me if your agency has identified an Equity Coordinator and if so, who that person is?
We have not. I'm not familiar with the program.
All right. So, I'll give you the read-as-dig-as version of a very long bill. So, basically, you know that Baltimore is historically one of the most inequitable cities in the world. Inequitable mainly through race, but also through income, gender and sexual orientation. We now are requiring all of our agencies to do analysis, initial analysis of their operations, everything they do, through a lens of equity to see their baseline study and that has to be presented to the council by the 17th of October this year. Also, by law, by October the 17th of this year, each agency must identify Equity Coordinator, someone that will coordinate the equity work in that particular agency. That person has to directly report to the agency lead, in this case, that will be you. That person also has to schedule trainings for the Department on Equity. The first round of trainings for each department in the city is also due by October the 17th. Mr. Amoros can bring you up to speak more about the legislation. I have a couple of questions related to the PEG agreement. First, I want to clarify that the agreement was negotiated on January 1 of 2017. It allows Comcast to charge a subscriber fee to every subscriber of 90 cent. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. How much total revenue did this subscriber fee bring in in the fiscal year of 2019?
Okay. That number, specific, is that the 980 figure, I believe? Would you, I'm sorry, is that the 90?
You got it. You have to use the mic.
Not sure exactly what the number is off the top of my head. It's a percentage-based that comes directly from Comcast. We get funding from Comcast in three different categories based off of our, the subscribers that are in Baltimore City.
Okay. So, according to the Finance Department, CHARM TV has about $2 million in unspent PEG fees. There are creative ways that can be, that that could be spent for other things. So, Mr. Amoros, that's a follow-up. Can we add that to the list? The amount of that particular PEG fees that the department grossed in 2019, but also checking to see the $2 million in unspent PEG fees and then what that, those funds can be used for?
Got it.
Thank you. The Vice Chairman talked about the capital expenses. Can you, have, do you guys have a list of projects that you're going to use that capital spending for? Can you provide that to us?
We can. We can talk about, I can send you what we have in the pipeline.
Yeah, you don't, you can, Mr. Amoros, we can just add that to the list too. They'll send that over to us. A few months ago, we had a hearing specifically around a couple of things, the processes with CHARM TV and we asked the question of how much it would cost for CHARM TV to be able to record and broadcast every single council hearing or meeting, but also how much it would cost for that to just be online, to just stream that. We to date have not received that. Do we have that calculation as of yet? So, what's the amount? Does Finance know what that amount is?
I don't have it off the top of my head. We can get back to you on that.
Thank you. If we can get, if, since it's in the budget, if we can get that by, let's say, lunchtime, that would be appreciated, since it's in the budget.
Sure.
Thank you. And then, the other portion of that hearing was about the competing events, right? So, in that particular case, we had a public safety hearing scheduled that was duly noted, duly advertised and right before the hearing started, the Chief of Staff of then, Council President Young, now Mayor Young, was alerted that they were no longer, we will no longer be able to broadcast that hearing. Instead, CHARM TV was going to be covering a swearing-in ceremony that was announced two weeks after the hearing. Can we talk about that process? Like, who decides what, how this happens or it's just, you know, if the mayor wakes up and Mayor Young wouldn't do that, former mayor would, the mayor wakes up and doesn't want this to be on TV, they can just cancel it and you guys go. Can we, is there official process, especially when there's processes on the end of the council and the other agencies to get things covered, right? So, I doubt very highly that if zoning or the Liquor Board was coming on at 1 o'clock on a Tuesday or Thursday and that the mayor was having a swearing-in ceremony, we would not show zoning or the Liquor Board all of a sudden because we know they happen at a particular time. And these instances are similar because we know which days of the week council public hearings are going to be, that are going to be on TV. So, can we talk about that process and has that process evolved? Or if there is an official process? Or is that process only official on the council's end of notifying and then on the other end it just, as folks feel?
So, I think in that hearing, I did apologize for that. I mean, obviously, CHARM TV and the Communications Office, we work, we serve at the pleasure of the mayor and so at that point, we had to make a decision. Also, I've also testified that we are very short-staffed and so we have to deploy our resources as needed. So, but I also said today that we are dedicated to being committed to building strong relationships with City Council and doing more informative pieces about City Council. And so, I think that we have resolved those issues. I don't anticipate any of that happening again. I think the process that we have in hand, scheduling with the Charm City and Joe, is the right step. I don't think, it was just an unfortunate thing that happened out of a calendar year.
Yeah, and we, trust me, we understand it and like I said, we don't think that those kind of problems will exist under this administration, but what I will say is this, that last year, you had just gotten here at that point, last year, immediately proceeding to you coming on board, each council person was promised that there was going to be time, that CHARM TV was going to come with them into their districts and record something and it was going to be put on air and then it just never happened. So, for us, while we understand what you're saying, we also have now a history of basically being ignored. But I think also because we understand that you're short-staffed, that's why I asked the question about those PEG funds. But also, more importantly, we understand that you guys do serve at the pleasure. That's why for us, the question around, is there a way for things to just be streamed, right? For example, like C-SPAN, for someone on my staff to go in there and click a button, it just gives that one camera view that records the whole hearing and we can click the button and end it when it's over so that when you guys don't have the staff to be in here, the public can still see what's going on. It's 2019, I don't think it, it really makes no sense that not every single city council hearing is not broadcast in some way, even if it's just via live stream.
President Scott, I definitely hear what your request is. I think that what gets lost sometimes is it still takes the same amount of manpower, whether it's done live on CHARM TV, recorded on CHARM TV or even just done on streaming. Tanya put together a very aggressive request to budgeting coming into this fiscal year to address the concerns that we had in our meeting when we met in November, December, whenever it was. And obviously, that's, didn't make it into this budget. So, we continue to work very closely with the folks in council services to make sure that we're getting things. I don't think there's been a request for a hearing that we haven't been able to comply with moving forward. If there are other hearings in other committees that we need to discuss more openly about maybe some of the timing for that, we just need to build that out and plan moving forward.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Miller. Also, I know it's totally separate, but I want to thank you for your hard work on trying to revive AFRAAM. This year's looks much, much better than it has in the past few years. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Just had a quick question. I know Council President asked for follow-up on the creative, or I guess, creative ways that the PEG funds could be used, but simply, can those funds be used for salaries?
No. The $2 million that would have come in that President Scott's mentioning would have been something that would have been aggregated over the last maybe year or even 18 months. That falls right into the capital funds that you asked about for.
Oh, so that too is a part of the A?
Yeah, yeah. So, that's probably what we earned over the last, since January 1st, 2017, because that sounds about right based on... Because that sounds about right based on, you know, my, my, I'm the one, I'm actually the person who receives the checks and makes the deposit. So I have some idea what their, what their totals are. So that's probably what we've received since January 1st and there was a little bit of a nest egg built before that. So, but again, it's, it has to be capital as defined by budget and legal. And it can't be used for salaries. It can't be used for operations. It just has to be used for capital. We're going to go through, Tanya mentioned about the building. We also are going to, we're, we're due for an upgrade on our editing systems. That's something that we've already started the process for. We've looked into a new playback system. So those all, those all fall in that capital funding and are going to allow us to improve the look, not only just on our air, but also on the digital platforms as well.
And so the fact that these funds could only be used for capital was something that was negotiated?
Well, the definition of the capital side is something that is national based on the, the peg-
It's regulated federally by the FCC. They have regulated this since the 1980s that it can only be used for capital funds. There's been a number of lawsuits and guidance documents issued by the FCC, but they have not clarified a lot of gray areas. They, we've determined that they cannot be used for salaries or training and development. Beyond that, it's been open to a lot of interpretation by various jurisdictions and various jurisdictions have used those funds more broadly to cover a wide definition of capital costs. Others have been more restrictive. We've worked with the Law Department over the year to try to get some clarity around that. And we keep coming back to this is a gray area that hasn't received a lot of attention or clarity from the federal government, but it is federally regulated.
And, and, and I must say that both Budget and the Law Department have worked with us within the framework of the law to try and get clarification on different projects that we're undertaking. What, even our web redesign has now been classified as capital, which, you know, gives us that extra funding to go out and really do something special for, for the city.
So, just kind of curious, it, it looks like, you know, our total salary request is approximately, you know, 400,000. And, but the general fund contribution is like 660,000. So is there nothing in that additional 260 that could have been covered by these funds, these peg funds?
Can you speak to Joe, the, so in the new Comcast agreement that was negotiated as of 2017, there was a provision that Comcast would give some additional funds towards operating costs separate from the regular capital peg funds. I believe, I think we took down the general fund appropriation a little bit to offset that funding. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, that, that is accurate. The, what was renegotiated for, that went into effect in January 1 of 17 was allowed for, again, a percentage of subscriber count that I think nets us around 80,000 per quarter. And the decision was made that to offset the general fund and use those funds for that. So where, where I think the negotiation was, was that we would have additional monies to do all of the projects that we've talked about already in the last 20 minutes or so. The reality of the situation was, is that that really just replaced general funds, general accounting funds that went back into the city and didn't increase our operating base at all.
Yeah, I mean, and, and I could just be completely off-base. It just seems crazy to me that there would be this kind of assessment on, on the, I guess, the Comcast usage and that those funds in totality couldn't cover the, the total, this total activity. I, I just don't, I don't understand that. Like, what, what, what do we, I mean, and it sounds like it's not just us, but this is a national issue. What is, what is wrong with our lobbying that doesn't, or advocate, advocacy that doesn't get us to the point where these funds? I mean, this activity, while it is needed, shouldn't come from the general fund when you have a source, a, a source of revenue that should, that can cover it and cover it multiple times?
That's been argued by a number of people over the years by community television advocacy groups. Some states have passed laws towards trying to give municipalities more jurisdiction to negotiate with cable providers to allow those use. And some states have been successful. California, I know, is an example.
You said that California has been successful?
I, I, I was reading that they had passed laws that gave a little bit more leeway per the FCC regulations to allow states and Comcast or other cable providers to negotiate use of those fees a little bit more broadly. But it's still largely restricted to capital. But we could read up further and recommend to our lobbyists that they work to carry that forward.
Yeah, I mean, I-
It's been, it's been an issue for three decades.
Right. So I'm glad that, you know, we're exploring, but I think that's something that we, I mean, because literally, you know, this almost $700,000 should be going to another activity in the city. And, and even during the first part of this week, we've heard, you know, example after example where projects, whether from wrecking parks to youth, you know, haven't been able to be funded because they didn't have the resources. And, you know, and, and I know you, I'm preaching to the choir, but these are resources that could, could have been used.
Agreed.
We've looked at it closely over the years. So technically, cable could use those for operating fees, but the nature of the law says that if they were used for operating fees, they would just, if there was an audit done, they would essentially just deduct those operating fees from the regular franchise fee, revenue that goes to the city from Comcast, which is separate from the peg revenue. So they would, in essence, if they audited, just deduct that from the revenue that flows to the city from the franchise fee.
So we should just charge them a higher franchise fee?
You could negotiate that in the next agreement.
When, when does, when does the negotiation come back on?
I believe it's a 10-year agreement. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was 10, it was 10 years. So it'll be starting negotiated in '25 and ending in December of '26.
So we should just figure out what the cost would be for Charm TV, raise the franchise fee accordingly, and let them audit it, but we're still going to get our money. I think that's what we should do. My, my next question, who determines how the capital expenditures are made? Like, once you decide, who determines how this 8 million dollars is going to be spent?
We submit our request to our budget auditor and then that's how it, it's get paid. I mean, essentially. So I oversee Charm TV, so it, we sort of, I work with, at, at the previous administration, work with the mayor directly. So those kind of things, I mean, it's a conversation. These are the things we need. Yes, we send it to Finance, it gets approved, we get what we need.
Cable has discretion over use of those funds. They decide what projects to fund.
Yes.
Okay. And so, and, and so is there any timeframe? Like, say you decide in three months that there's an expense that you deem appropriate for Charm TV. Are you able to make that request at that point or there are certain times of the year where?
No, we can make the request. It does go through the same procurement process, but otherwise.
So if in our conversations, we were able to determine that a program like Douglas fits in with how the monies could be determined, or could be spent, and we, and there was a proposal for that, you, you ultimately, I guess, you know, obviously with the, you know, some mayoral, you know, input, you could make that-
Happen quickly.
I love that.
In terms of staffing, there might be room for partnership too with some, an organization like Family League or with a youth fund to, you know, provide, you know, earmark some funding. You know, if we were to, if the capital peg fees were to, you know, give equipment to students, for example, at Douglas High School, but to fill in, you know, someone to run the program, for example, there might be room for partnership there.
So I don't think it has to be noted, but I, I appreciate the fact that you want to sit down and discuss that. I, I just think that it would be a tremendous opportunity. And, and it kind of falls in line with the conversation that I had with BOPA, that Baltimore used to be, just a few short years ago, a hotbed for film. And based upon some, the fact that the state took away some incentives that filmmakers were accustomed to, we saw a lot of that film work go to cities like Atlanta, even to Toronto, and now even down into Virginia. And with the, with the thing, with the way that the landscape is shifting in the nation, we've got a window of opportunity to kind of reclaim some of that, that film industry.
You're talking about like in Georgia, Netflix threatening to pull out. Yeah, I was just talking to someone about that.
And, and, and so not only should we be, be thinking about establishing, re-establishing the film industry in Baltimore, but it also is an opportunity to create a pipeline of young people from high school to college that could walk into multiple levels of jobs in that industry. So I, and that's, that's the only reason I'm, I'm really pressing that. Councilwoman Middleton?
I welcome your support.
Thank you. Hi, how are you? And I guess my statement is piggybacking on what the Council President had said, what Councilwoman Sneed had said, and also Vice Chair Pinkett. So I guess two things to just to kind of give you some information and I can definitely help you with. And it's like an example. So they have been, you know, revitalizing and renovating and building 21st century schools. And Pimlico Elementary Middle is a completed 21st century school. They turned, they, with their restructuring, they preserved some of the historical structure and then of course tore down and added new. But the one building that they preserved, they turned into a media center. And this is a middle school. I, I don't know if you had an opportunity to visit the, that school. And this is just a, not even just high school. It's reaching down to, you know, eighth grade level. The Baltimore City Public School System also created a new office of community and, community engagement with Tina Height Hubbard is the director. And of course, she's also very familiar with, with that school, just with her dealings with, in the past, with Park, you know, Park Heights and Park Heights Renaissance and so on. But I just see this as an opportunity for your department to kind of partner. I can definitely set up a, a meet, make a meeting happen with her and the school and, and Charm City. And just kind of, because it's a, for a middle school and to change a whole building, I mean, it's just a wonderful opportunity to build a partnership. And what we've been doing as a council with just about every agency is just kind of helping them to think outside of the box in, in doing things and especially reaching our youth. And I just envision this a, a nice opportunity to really kind of do a partnership with another school system. I know Councilwoman Sneed had mentioned Morgan and so on, but this, this is reaching at the middle school level.
And kids as young as 12 and 13, they're creating their own content on YouTube and Facebook.
Right. That's their interest right now.
I mean, that's the idea to create this multi-channel platform on our web so that this content, these creators can then submit this content on our platform. So you're absolutely right. We're getting there.
Yes. Also in the, and just so happened also at that school, their plans are in September to have a citywide, basically, it's like one of the biggest health fairs and it's for the whole entire city. And one of our health organizations is sponsoring this. They're mimicking this from something that they did in West Virginia. And it went so well that they're trying it here and that's also going to be at Pimlico. I'll give you information about that. It's, it's just going to be an opportunity for parents and their children and so on to get any kind of free health service for that whole day for anything, whether it's getting your teeth cleaned to diabetes, x-rays. But it's going to be open to the entire city. And, you know, because that area is close to bus routes and so on, they, it was kind of one of the locations that was picked. So again, it's another opportunity for you to work and share. So we can talk about that.
Absolutely. So we'll follow up with your office. Thank you for that.
Of course. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I'm being that there are no further questions. Thank you so much. We appreciate all that you and Charm TV do. At this point, this committee is in recess until 10 a.m. when we'll have the Planning Department. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.